Your gracious heaven, Father, we thank you for this day and all the many blessings. Lord, we thank you for allowing us once again, Lord, to come out and serve this community. Lord, we pray that every decision we make is according to thy will. Lord, we pray for our country, especially the men and women that serve on the floor and soul, that you wrap thy hand around them and bring them back home safe and sound. Lord, we pray for our community leaders and worldwide leaders. They always hope to be given wisdom and guidance. Pray for the sick, especially the ones that we know will restore them back to their natural health. Lord, we ask you to bless the families that have lost loved ones. Comfort them as only you know how. Forgive us of our sins, Christ and pray. Chief of Leadership, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, Miss Phillips.
Alvin Clough.
Present.
Alvin Dale.
Present.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Present.
Alvin Elver.
Here.
Alvin Lankton.
Here.
Alvin Major.
Here.
All present, motion to approve minutes of last month's meeting. Motion made by Alvin Rexdale, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alvin John Clough. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lack sign, motion passed. Any additions or additions to the agenda? Okay, here and done, we will motion to accept the agenda as is. Motion made by Alvin Bill Lender, second by Vice Mayor Ken Johnson. Any discussion? All for the motion, let it know, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lack sign, motion passed. We have no business under over business. New business, we have item number one downtown revitalization. Ms. Shannon Cantrell, Mr. Gene Gant will not be present. And I think Mr. Ray Evans is going to be on Zoom. Has somebody? Okay. Shannon, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, so we had following last weekend and following was a great success. We had beautiful weather and probably anywhere from seven to eight thousand people on our downtown square. It was a great day and just wanted to give y'all a report on that. Always happy to see it come, but always glad for it to be over. And back in September, of course, I wasn't able to talk with y'all last month, but back in September, we had our governor's conference on tourism and they gave us some numbers while we were there and I wanted to share those with you.
Shannon, can you?
Yes.
Mr. Evans, can you hear us? One, two, three, four, five, can you test?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Carry on, Miss Phillips.
So we received your economic impact numbers on tourism and Tennessee ranks number 11 in visitor spending in the nation. We were actually just one above Hawaii, which was quite impressive. Travelers in Tennessee spend seventy-nine million dollars a day. And some of that actually was spent in Oatton County. So in 2022, Oatton County saw seven million two hundred sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars spent in visitor tourism spending. That is a six point nine percent increase over 2021. And lodging was up eleven point three percent as well. So any increase is always a good thing. So hopefully when we get our numbers for next year, it will just continue to increase. We did get a graph that started in, if I remember right, I think it was around 2017. So every year since then, we have, we have seen increases in tourism spending. Also, a couple of dates that y'all need to be aware of. Our Christmas parade sign up started today. And if you want to sign up for the Christmas parade, you do need to come by the chamber, fill out some paperwork and let us give you a number for the parade. The theme this year is the magic of Christmas. And the parade will be held on December 9 at 3:00 P.M. And our Christmas in the Country Day starts November 24th, December 1st and December 8th from 5:00 to 8:00. More information will be put out on Facebook, so just be watching that. And our Leadership Overton Program is making a comeback. So our deadline to apply for Leadership Overton is December 1st. You can get a paper application at the chamber. I can email it to anyone who wants to participate. Or you can do the form, you can fill out the application online And if you go to that website, it will give you all the, all the information you need to know about Leadership Overton and what its purpose is. And that's all we have.
Any questions for Ms. Cantrell? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cantrell. Okay, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Ray Evans.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mayor. First, let's start with our Appalachian Regional Mission project on South Church Street. We've got some good news today that the vaults and transformers are being delivered thirty days earlier than we had anticipated. So we expect those to be delivered in Livingston almost any day now. So we have scheduled a meeting for next Tuesday with all of the participants in the project with Upper Coblen, with Twin Lakes, with the city, bars design, et cetera, to sort of map out a path forward since we're getting those thirty days prior to what we anticipated. And we anticipate having a meeting with the property owners and the tenants the following Tuesday after next Tuesday to sort of map out a game plan on how we are going to proceed. We don't, absolutely not want to interfere with the sales during the holidays with the merchants and such. So we're going to be very sensitive to that. Our sidewalk project, the TDOT Multi-Bolax Access Grant Project, we think that we have submitted all of the required modifications to driveway plans and documents and those are in TDOT's hands for review. We hope to hear something positive about that before your next meeting. Still anticipating that we might start construction sometime just after the first of the year. The courthouse project, TDOT Transportation Alternatives Program. You have an item before you that would increase our contract with Los Design for the construction phase services from eighty-three thousand to one hundred two thousand two forty-six. And that's based on a construction cost increase based on the last construction estimate, increasing from four hundred and fifteen thousand to five hundred and eleven thousand two thirty-one. And as you might imagine, from the time we had our first budget estimate in 2020 to now, inflation, cost of materials, et cetera, have gone up. Plus, the city has rightfully so added some electrical items that will enhance their ability to provide better electric service for events and the courthouse square. So we're asking you to, first of all, approve the contract amendment from eighty-three thousand to one hundred two thousand four, two forty-six for the construction phase services for Los. And let me also say that we are, we will be asking TDOT to increase the grant amount to offset not only that, but also the increase in construction costs as well. Now, whether we'll be successful or not, we're going to ask them if they will increase their grant amount. And also, if you remember, the city and county have an agreement on this project that any of the overages beyond a grant is split fifty-fifty between the city and the county. So lastly, we have-
Ray, if you don't mind, let me go ahead and take care of this one. This, as you heard Mr. Evans say, which is our consultant, that the Los contract, the contract has went from eighty-three thousand to one hundred two thousand two forty-six. And the increase that, of course, we have paid for that coming out of our courthouse enhancement grant and, yes, Los Design.
It says one hundred nineteen thousand.
Yeah, sir, Mayor, let me explain that.
Okay.
Mid-afternoon today, I found what I believe to be an error in what Los had sent to the city. I believe they miscalculated the amount that would be the increase. I think the amount is one oh two, two forty-six instead of one nineteen and changed it they had sent earlier. And I've asked them to revise their contract amendment to reflect the one oh two, two forty-six and that's what I'm recommending to them.
Okay, thank you, good question.
All right, another question I have on this contract is it says it is expensive amounts not included are out-of-pocket expenses like travel, subsistence, supply, reproduction, telephone, communications, deliveries, agency field fees and mileage. Do we have any idea how much that might be? And if that's not included, what's twenty percent for?
So Alvin, great question. Our consultants have actually just submitted final construction documents to TDOT for review. And one of the reasons that we have to modify this agreement with Los is that TDOT requires a current contract with the consultant before they will review the final construction documents. So I don't anticipate any additional things, as you just described, beyond what we've already incurred for construction plans beyond that.
So the one oh two, two forty-six is what Mr. Evans is saying is going to be. So we just need to, council wishes to approve this, we entertain a motion this hour.
Motion agreed.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Johnson to go from eighty-three thousand to one hundred two thousand two forty-six. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alvin Rexdale, any discussion? Roll call, vote, Miss Phillips.
Alvin Elver.
Yes.
Alvin Elver.
Yes.
Alvin Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Alvin Lender.
Yes.
Alvin Huh.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Just a reminder to the board members and the folks at the Republican Field Pusher Buttons so the media and general public can hear the conversation, we appreciate it, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Evans.
So the next two items on your agenda are two resolutions. The first is Resolution 2023-11-1. And that's a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a 2023 Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development Site Development Grant and committing the matching funds. So we actually submitted the application in October and we submitted a draft resolution as part of that application, which is fair to do. So we're just catching up with, in essence, with what we did in the application. You'll see that we have applied for a grant of five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. That the city would match for sixty thousand, seventy-five dollars. And this would be for all the new building studies on the remaining lot in the city industrial tract, plus all the drainage and utilities associated with preparing that site for a hundred thousand square foot industrial building plus eight hundred space parking lot as well. So in essence, this resolution is just catching up with what we've already done as far as the application from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development. I would recommend approval of the resolution.
All right, take a motion for this resolution authorization of the mayor himself to apply for a 2023 ECD Site Development Grant Committee with a matching fund, sixty thousand and seventy-five. Motion made by Alvin Clough.
Second.
Second by Alvin Lender, any discussion? Roll call, vote, Miss Phillips.
Alvin Elver.
Yes.
Alvin Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Alvin Lander.
Yes.
Alvin Paul.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion passed, carry on, Mr. Evans.
So the next resolution is a resolution establishing a consultant selection policy for the cities of Livingston. And this is a requirement that TDOT has asked us to do for the 2023 Transportation Alternatives Grant, which is Little Street and Cedar Street between Church and Spring Street. It's ironic that we've had a number of TDOT grants in the past that did mention this, but this one is, has come forward as a requirement for this particular grant. And basically it says that we're going to comply with state statutes and the Brooks Act in how we solicit and select engineering consultants for projects. And it's nothing more or less than that. Although I would tell you that the policy that we are adopting is, many pages long, is basically TDOT's policy adopted for municipalities. But again, it's a requirement, it's what we've been doing all along and I think it's more or less just making sure that we've got the right paperwork in place for this particular grant. I would recommend that we approve the consultant selection policy.
Resolution, Resolution 2023-11-11-2, Resolution adopted consultant selection policy for projects funded for, in whole or in part, by funds provided by the Federal Highway Administration Tennessee Department of Transportation. You heard it, consultant, it's a minus if we're going to continue on. So I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution. Motion made by Alvin Bill Lender, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alvin Rexdale, any discussion? All for the motion, let it know, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all opposed against the motion, lack sign? All right, motion passed. Any other business, Mr. Evans?
Well, I couldn't hear Shannon terribly well, but I think I heard her mention that we have received a five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars as our sales tax reimbursement for the year of 2022, 2023. A great number, it's about five percent more than we received last year and I think it's indicative that we are making the right investments in our central business district and it's paying off for us, nothing elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. You're free to stay or you're free to cut it off.
I'm going.
Thank you. All right, item number four, Mr. Brian Stone from Performance Services. Come on up, Mr. Stone.
Thank you. You may recall a couple of months ago, I sat up here and presented a little bit about a preliminary report that we had prepared out with Performance Services. We had, actually it was on our dime with no obligation or cost to the city. We'd come out, spent a couple of days here trying to identify. Initially, it was how to reduce pumping costs and operating costs on the water wastewater side. We ended up finding quite a bit others. And so you should have a copy of that report. If you didn't receive a hard copy back then, there should, I believe there was one in the board packet. But we identified a number of things, scope items, that we felt had high return on investment, relatively low cost and would benefit the city from an operational and a budgetary perspective. What I'm asking tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions about either the report or anything else, is that you allow us to do a little bit more investigation and development in that. It is one other step, so there's actually an authorization in there. This next step will allow us to fully engineer and develop each of those scope items, bid them out, bring back hard costs to you, and plus quantify the return on investment for each of those scope items. So at the end of this next step, we would bring full scope with details, we would bring full cost itemized out, and then their guaranteed return on investment. If the city chooses to go and implement those scope items, we would be your partner to help do that. And then we would use local qualified subcontractors to actually implement the work. We've worked with Woppers and other engineers that you have partners here in the city to make sure there's no overlap in what they're doing on the water loss side or the water wastewater side. So our goal would be to identify or further develop those scope items that would impact your operations and your budget. We believe those, and you'll see in one of the last pages of that, those scope items will reduce your budget by about ninety thousand dollars a year at a minimum. So we do think there's more there that we can kind of bring out from a savings perspective, but that's roughly about twenty-four percent of your energy cost. So there's a substantial amount that we think is on the operational side, but we never recommend production in man hours or manpower. It's simply how to make you more efficient from a city perspective. And most importantly, remove things from your capital needs list from where you're on. So we find ways to fund them using savings as opposed to finding money or trying to come up with money in the budget. So this next phase simply authorizes us to go finish that. If you do it, if you don't implement any of the scope items, you simply reimburse us up to twenty-five thousand dollars for our engineering and development costs. But I'm happy to answer any questions about either the report or this next step.
I've met with Mr. Stone a couple of times. I think that, and this is not the first time that he's came for this, Lord, I know that solar was an option that we've discussed, especially with our large utility bills pumping water from Butler's Landing to the gravity flow, pumping to Hillham, gravity flow into Livingston. So this could be a step that solar or something other energy efficient could come up and have significant savings for the city.
That is worth noting, under one of the new programs in the Inflation Reduction Act, they actually expanded the tax credit for solar. So cities, public utilities, any nonprofit can now get a rebate of up to thirty percent of the cost of solar. So it's not important with the tax credit, it's a straight rebate for thirty percent of the cost of implementing solar.
Is there also the possibility of grants and so forth? That if we did go on to the next step and implement all that, the issue of the credits, is there?
Yes, sir, so part of our investigation, we would investigate, there's a number of grants that we have applied for for cities in the past. So we would explore those based on the scope that we've identified here. There's a number in the infrastructure and investment, I I J A, whatever that is. There's a number of those that relate directly to water wastewater that we would explore, especially for the state of system would be one in particular.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Evans, authorize the next step.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Ken Johnson to go on the contracts with Performance Services not to exceed the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars that can take us through the next step. Is there a second?
Second.
Alvin Bill Lender, second motion, any discussion? Roll call, vote, Miss Phillips.
Alvin Dale.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Johnson.
Yes.
Alvin Lander.
Yes.
Alvin Fad.
Yes.
Alvin Elver.
Yes.
Alvin Abner.
Yes.
Motion passed. Do you have anything else, Mr. Stone?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, is there a natural gas report? Mr. Alan Langerfeld, Seminister Energy.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is going to be a warm winter. Can you push your button a little?
It's going to be a warm week. I usually like to tell you I brought the cold weather with me, but I hidden it out. We did get a weather forecast on the nineteenth of October that NOAA came out with and they're, they're kind of in the middle for our region. It was southeast, I think you're calling it equal chances for winter. Which equal chances means that it may be close to the third year normal. Normal weather, if you ever survive thirty years, is pretty cold weather. We didn't see that last January, I mean, it was, we had a warm January. And when I was here last December, we were talking about coming out of nine dollar price, prices per decker term in September of that year, if you remember that summer. That was after Ukraine issued, popped up, natural gas supplies were going, or LNG supplies were going to Ukraine as fast as they could. So that is kind of set down, cheap politically, I guess. The wild card is probably going to be Israel at this point. If there's, I guess the caveat on that is the United States can only export a certain amount of LNG to the world. And that's about, well, thirteen B C F a day right now. They're trying to increase that as fast as possible, but it's not going to be overnight, it's going to take months. So, and I've got a handout, I'm going to pass this around. I mentioned the NOAA report. This kind of gives you a snapshot of what they produced on equal chances for cold weather, equal chances for the third year normal for our region. And then they're actually calling for winter as a normal winter. Well, after the last sixty days of the drought we've been through, we could probably do some running this winter to get the water level back. So they're considering this a meanew winter, which that's what's going to bring the moisture in. And the backwardation of the winter is going to be cooler on the back half of winter than the front end. As I said, we agree, we're almost in the degrees today. So it's already kind of started into that warm pattern and then it's supposed to be on the backside of winter, it's supposed to be colder. I mentioned nine dollar gas prices the last winter. As it got warmer into January, February, that gas prices started dropping off. But we still ended winter fairly high. The good thing is, over the last nine months, gas prices have really settled back down to something a little bit lower than normal, well below four dollars. And that's what it's looking like right now for winter, is gas prices should stay stabilized unless something extreme happens, extreme weather or something outside of what we're, our control was forecasting around here. So that's, that's good news. We're going to have a cool winter, a normal winter, it's good for the natural gas sales. And the best part is, natural gas prices are down for your customers to go and pay a lower price per decker term. So that, that in itself is the overall good news. We, you know, one of the things I would point out is, next summer as well is projected to be down. As we go into the calendar twenty-four, twenty-five winter, it's slightly higher. And then going into twenty-five, twenty-six, it's slightly higher. When I was here last December, it was opposite of that. It was cheaper the farther out we were. So it's switched its course back to normal gas pricing. So the farther you go out, the higher it gets. You still don't get to the absorbed number. You still don't get to the absorbed numbers of last year. Barring everything that we're seeing, we put this winter as a calm winter, and we had no real extreme events like we did last Christmas. Last Christmas was devastating to a lot of people in more ways than one. There weren't, a couple of things, as we gained another year, more power generation has come online, more people are trying to use natural gas to generate electricity. So, there's more demand going into this winter than before. There's a lot of natural gas supplies. There hasn't been a lot of pipelines built to get the supply to the market. So, when we see extreme weather, we'll see a tightening of the pipes and deliverability, and that's going to spike prices. Livingston is well positioned with some fixed prices as well as the futures that we're seeing. So, overall, we're set up good for winter.
As far as for the volume of gas, there shouldn't be a problem, be a shortage.
Oh, no. No. There, you know, the pipeline has had, I was talking to Steve earlier. The pipeline has restrictions on the pipe almost twelve months out of the year now for maintenance for some reason. So, there shouldn't be a shortage of supply. It's just it gets, the pipe gets tight. A lot of people are trying to get that same molecule through the pipeline. So, but there shouldn't be a shortage of it. There's a lot of natural gas supply. The restrictions are the pipelines that move it.
You say we've got some locked in fixed prices. How far out are those? How far out have we locked?
I think through twenty-four. There's something in March of twenty-five. So, that is going to help that what we just talked about, prices out in the future are higher. And that fixed price is going to help level that out. And hopefully, you know, hopefully we're not getting back to the nine-dollar rule. Nobody wants to see that. Nobody. But right now, the market, the market's volatile on weather reports. Market dropped today because of the switch record. When we get cold weather forecasts, it's going to spike a little bit. And that's what is kind of normal at this point. But overall, the winter and through natural gas looks fairly calm.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate that update. Is there any questions from Mr. Langerfeld on the natural gas report? Steve, you got any questions?
I'm sorry.
Sherry? Has Sherry been here? She got any questions or Alan?
I'm good.
Okay. She's good. All right. Well, thank you very much. We always appreciate you coming in. Thank you. We appreciate you. Thank you. Next on our agenda is our procurement policy conflict adventure statement from grassroots planning. Ms. Amanda, come in.
Hello, hello. Of course, you know, we're working through these ARK funds, the American Rescue Act. We're working through those, and kind of like Mr. Evans was saying a few minutes ago, when a grant is involved, we do what the funding agency says. So, TDEC has asked us to add a conflict venture statement to our procurement policy. And they're asking all the communities around the area to do this. Most of us use the Municipal Persilene Act of nineteen ninety-three. So, just like, we're doing this like everyone else is having to. So, they've asked us to add this to our procurement policy. I would recommend us following their guidelines.
Yes, the guidelines that we added to it, I think we added a sentence or a word or four words?
It's just about maybe three lines. That's one sentence.
The conflict adventure statement, period of all, no employee, officer, agent of talent, who may participate in selection, award, or administration of contracts supported by federal authority if he or she has a real or apparent conflict of interest in the selected vendor. That's what it says. So, we just need to approve this to continue where we get our harbor funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds. Motion made by Alderman Rexdale.
Second.
Second by Alderman John Clough. Any discussion? All for the motion, letting know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lights out. Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Amanda.
Thank you.
Next, we have the bids on the garbage, next we have the bids on the garbage truck. As you know, that we did have a work session to discuss whether, what direction we wanted to go in the garbage industry, and there was some misunderstanding on the pricing. So, we went ahead and went out to bid for a garbage truck. We had the bid opening today, advertising the paper and municipal equipment with a bid of two-hundred-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars even. That was a budgeted line item of two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand dollars. So, it came in under budget. According to them, we should have the truck bid filled. And that's where we are. So, it is a conventional truck, as you're used to seeing, with the back loader and three folk stopper truck. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept this bid.
Motion approved.
Motion made by Alderman David Leinford to accept the municipal equipment bid, two-hundred-thousand-seven-twenty-seven. Second by Alderman Rexdale. Who was it? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Bruce Eller, second in motion. Sorry about that. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Ms. Phillips.
Vice Commissioner Dotson.
Yes.
Alderman Lender.
Yes.
Alderman Fad.
Yes.
Alderman Lander.
Yes.
Alderman Havlin.
Yes.
Alderman Day.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven, or number eight is the commercial garbage rates. If you remember in the work session, we had a discussion that we hadn't had a rate increase in over thirty years of collected garbage as far as the commercial garbage is. This is not affected. The residential garbage that we are continuing to pick up at no extra cost. But the price increase, you can see there where we was at, where we going. The first pickup's twenty, going to twenty, it'd be sixty dollars second. Two pickups each week, we go to one-hundred-and-twenty. Third pickup, it would one-eighty. Four pickups each week, we'll be two-forty. And five pickups each week, we go to three-hundred. So...
Let me just go a little faster.
General first. General first.
Need a motion?
Yes, sir. Need a motion.
How many motion?
Motion made by Alderman Bill Lender. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman John Clough. Any discussion? All for the motion, letting know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lights out. Motion passed. Any other business? Any public comments? Here and then, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Ken Dotson, is there a second?
Second.
Bill Lender, all for the motion, letting know by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, lights out. Word, General.